Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing in vocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mrs. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Sarowski, Mrs. Kosky?
Present.
Mr. Radke?
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Present.
Mrs. Yanis?
Here.
Mrs. Zarco?
Present.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryska. Mayor Protam Sarowski apologizes for not being here. She had an unavoidable conflict with work and she will be back for the next meeting. Council, we need approval of the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda, deleting item 6A and moving item 7G from the consent agenda to consideration item 1.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First item on our agenda is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief update on a calendar item. Our offices will be closed for business on Monday, February 18th, which is President's Day. And this will be an in-service training day for our employees and also an award recognition day for our employees. So the offices include City Hall, our library, Parks and Recreation Center, Senior Center, and the Nature Center. Normal business hours resume on Tuesday and there'll be no effect on refuse collection. And the last item on my report this evening is to introduce our Economic Development Advisor, Luke Bonner, who's going to give us an update on the Robotics Collaboration Center, which I reported on a couple of meetings ago. But we have some even new news to share with you on that very exciting endeavor.
Mr. Bonner.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel, and good evening, members of council. For the past 24 months, the city and Macomb County have been working very collaboratively together on a robotics collaboration center to be housed at the Velocity Collaboration Center. And the purpose of the Robotics Collaboration Center is truthfully all about talent. And the purpose of the center is creating a long-term pipeline that will fuel the companies in the region and that will fuel innovation for years to come. I'm going to go through this presentation that'll give you a lot of background on the research that the county and the city have done together and why we've essentially come up with this Robotics Collaboration Center project. In 2016, and not to go through all of the details, and actually every year, but in 2016, Automation Alley provided a tech report surveying their technology company CEOs about the outlook of Michigan for tech and innovation growth. And all tech CEOs were optimistic about growth plans in Michigan and hiring plans in Michigan. And a lot of their rationale was Southeast Michigan has a much better environment for business and for tech professionals than, you know, truthfully, the biggest rival in all the country when it comes to technology is Silicon Valley. Talent is cheaper, cost to real estate is cheaper, and there is less likelihood that talented, the talented workforce is going to hop back and forth between companies constantly, therefore driving up the cost, which is what happens in Silicon Valley. But not only do our tech companies know this in Southeast Michigan, but they're actually saying this in Silicon Valley as well. We just did some research on a few quotes and articles. Sergey Brin is the co-founder of Google and he essentially said, "Don't come to Silicon Valley if you're going to start a tech company." And something that hits even closer to home is Steve Blank, who is a University of Michigan graduate, by the way, said in a presentation at Stanford University, "Silicon Valley is not the place to start a company. You should go do it in Ann Arbor." Now, this is a Sterling Heights-focused initiative. The purpose of that comment was Steve Blank went to University of Michigan, but bigger than that it was, "Start your business in Michigan and not Silicon Valley." We have a lot going on here in Southeast Michigan, especially from a higher education perspective. The University of Michigan, University of Trade Mercy, Lawrence Tech, and OU have very prominent robotics programs. This is for the city of Sterling Heights and our partnership with Oakland University on the Macomb OU incubator. This is especially going to be helpful moving forward as we are continuing to advance our relationship with Oakland University and robotics is a very big piece of that. We actually met today on this program with OU and we'll start meetings with their robotics group. If we look at regional STEM initiatives, there isn't a shortage of projects and events going on from First LEGO League to the Robo Fest at Lawrence Tech, First Robotics in high school, and I'll come back to that one second. Oakland County has a Competitive Robotics Association. There's a Square One Educational Network, which teaches teachers on curriculum related to STEM. There's the Intelligent Ground Vehicle Competition that's primarily held at Oakland University and then Kettering University is a huge supporter of First Robotics. Now, going back to First Robotics in Macomb County, the state of Michigan overall leads the entire nation in terms of First Robotics teams with over 500. Comparatively speaking, Macomb County only has 16 teams. So it's the third-largest county in the state of Michigan that is woefully underrepresented, a large part due to a lack of mentors, a lack of funding for these programs. There is a pretty significant entry fee, for example, for a team to enter into a First Robotics competition. We know the Thunder Chickens here because we're constantly presenting them awards for doing so well in national competitions. But that's kind of where the comparison stops. There isn't enough teams in Macomb County and this Robotics Collaboration Center is definitely going to help perpetuate that. We studied several benchmarks, and again, this is a collaboration project, but one of the benchmarks we looked at was Grid 70 in Grand Rapids. That's a little bit different program, but it's very much talent-related. There were multiple companies in Grand Rapids, including Meyer, including Wolverine Worldwide and Amway, that as an effort to retain and attract talent, they all kind of came together and rented a building in downtown Grand Rapids to put design teams, put engineering teams, to put software teams, so that they can all work collaboratively together and they can keep this group of talented people together in downtown Grand Rapids. We looked at the Robotics Institute at Carnegie Mellon. Carnegie Mellon has one of the top robotics programs in the country. They are significant supporters of K-12 education in the Pittsburgh area. So something that we looked at as a potential model of, the Robotics Collaboration Center can work collaboratively with K-12 and the ISD here in Macomb County. There's another example of SRI in Menlo Park, California. Again, another nonprofit organization that is working with industry partners more on technology development than talent development. I'm going to skip through, I'm going to skip through to Tech Shop Detroit really quickly because this was one of the better examples we actually, we actually saw. But Ford was running Tech Shop Detroit in Dearborn and essentially it was a makerspace. Manufacturing, machinery and equipment available for people to come in and do different small manufacturing projects. Ford also had Tech Shop in Silicon Valley in San Francisco. And they said there was a very distinct difference between Tech Shop Detroit and Tech Shop San Francisco, where in Detroit it was mostly weekend hobbyists that were working on car engines or rebuilding a motorcycle or that sort of thing. But what they saw in their San Francisco lab was that a lot of the software engineers were coming from Google and Apple and Twitter and LinkedIn, and they were coming in super enthusiastic about, wow, we can use these machines to actually make something. So the purpose of that story is a lot of what our companies are telling us is, it's hard to get young people involved in manufacturing today because they don't see manufacturing as a real cool, hip, and exciting career field. However, in the San Francisco example, all of the software-based developers were really excited about manufacturing. They thought it was really cool. So part of this Robotics Collaboration Center is standing up a separate, private nonprofit that would be able to link industry with K-12 with the purpose of putting an emphasis on software as a core educational component. That software then leading into building robots, where there's a lot of technology in a robot. There are sensors, there's software, electrical parts, there's mechanical engineering, and there's actual machining and manufacturing of the robot and making it do something. So the center is focused on, let's use the robot really just kind of as the vehicle, but really it's all the technology that goes into it, which we think will help ISD and K-12. And Dr. Christine Johns is a huge supporter of this, to make sure that kids have other opportunities outside of school that either at night, on the weekends, or during the summer when school's over with, that they'll continue to work on their, work on their skill set. Just a, just a few more slides here. I think I put a little bit too much detail on some of these slides and I apologize for that. So again, I just wanted to talk about the type of technologies and why this is important for us. I talked about sensors, there's vision systems, there's a lot of software. There's a lot of collaboration now between robots and human beings in the, in the workplace. Then there's the fabrication and there's the prototyping of the actual robot itself. So when you start to look at the manufacturing workforce, there is as much of a high demand in software capability to program CNC machines, program automation systems, as much as there are as skill trades in those technical jobs that are required today. So the Robotics Collaboration Center, where it stands today, Macomb County is working with a consulting team out of Lansing, which is called Public Sector Consultants, and Miller Canfield, who we're familiar with, a law firm. They actually have an economic development group at Miller Canfield, to, to put together the structure of the nonprofit, to seek out industry partners that are both first, I'll call them first board members, and then also funders of this initiative. We're also looking at the space requirements at Velocity to see if there's any alterations that we have to make for any machinery and equipment or lab space that needs to go in there. And then ultimately, by the end of this year, after those multiple things are done, they'll be hiring an executive director. This is something that's, we've been working on for, you know, probably the past 24 months. We do have a lot of support from MEDC on this and we'll be seeking support from other entities, other foundations, federal grants, and then of course, private sector donations from those industry partners that are going to collaborate with the school system on these sort of K-12 STEM education programs with First Robotics being a priority. So, thank you.
And Mayor, we'll be hearing much more about the collaborative as it comes together over the next year and the structures actually formed and, and the build-out begins. And that concludes my report this evening.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel, and thank you, Mr. Bonner, for your presentation. Next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda with the omission of item G. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? If not, council, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a consideration item. This is item G from the consent agenda to adopt a notice of intent resolution for public works facilities capital improvement bonds. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke.
Let me just find the motion. Resolve to adopt notice of intent resolution for public works facility capital improvement bonds.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Mr. Radke?
I was just asking Mr. Vanderpoel to make a brief presentation about why we are going out for bonding for the DBW facilities. I know a lot of, it happened almost a year ago and I think some people are unaware of the, it's almost 50-year-old facility with several problems. So with your permission, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vanderpoel?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Radke, I'm happy to summarize the needs of, of this building. And as you mentioned, the intent resolution that's being considered by council this evening simply establishes the intent to sell the bonds that will be necessary to fund this building replacement. First of all, the, the building is 43 years old and has had very minimal upgrades. Currently, the facility and the grounds do not comply with OSHA, ADA, and DEQ requirements. The interior design of the shop area is counterproductive to workflow. And just again, by way of review, this is our Department of Public Works facility located on 18 Mile Road between Van Dyke and Mound. Exterior walls are not insulated, they're simply cinder block. I'm sure many of you have driven by the facility. You can tell it's definitely an older building. Many areas are cracking of the cinder block. In fact, I have a couple of pictures I'll show shortly. Maybe they'll pop up now. Okay, if I can draw your attention to the screen. So this is one of the largest walls. As you can see, looking upward, the wall is simply separating. This is something that caulk isn't going to solve. It continues to separate more and more. If you look to your right, you'll see the actual cinder block cracking. This is prevalent throughout the facility and you can literally see daylight through these cracks. And here again, this is not something that mortar or caulking's going to solve. This is just an aging building with cinder block that has exhausted its useful life. And you'll see in the bottom right-hand corner that there's an actual manhole cover that is connected to the sewer system that is inside an office. So, you know, this would not be designed this way today and certainly needs to be resolved. It does emit very obnoxious odors, of course, throughout the, the workday. The bulk material storage outside is uncovered and really isn't within DEQ regulations. There has already been one major fire in the building and the electrical circuit breakers are no longer produced because they have a history of causing building fires. Both the Teamsters Field Unit, Unit Employees and the Ask Me Supervisors reside in the shop. And, and for those of you who have been actually inside the structure, all the offices are in the center of the building for the most part. There are some administrative offices off to the front side, but most are in the middle. So they're constantly being surrounded by vehicles, plows, tractors, front-end loaders emitting diesel fumes and other exhausts and so on. The ventilation is obviously not ideal by today's standards. More than half of the vehicles and equipment are stored outside, decreasing the useful life of, of that equipment. The shop floor drains are undersized and continuously backing up. Unfortunately, there's water leaking from the ceiling in many places, although the ceiling has been, the roof has been maintained to the best of our abilities. The underground vehicle hoists are consistently filling up with water. And the largest training room can only hold about one-third of the department. And obviously, as operations have become more sophisticated and equipment has become far more sophisticated by today's standards, you know, training is in great demand in the department and we simply don't have the space to do it there. There's no emergency egress and ingress for the office staff that is located in the administrative office area. There's only one way in and one way out. Obviously, that's not ideal by today's standards. So the building has undoubtedly exhausted its useful life. There just really isn't an opportunity to renovate this building. When you get into complicated buildings like this where you do have to fully vent the exhaust systems from hundreds of pieces of equipment, that becomes very complicated. The supplies that are stored in the building are very sophisticated. So it's just the, the heating and ventilation systems complicated. The mechanical system by today's standards is very sophisticated. So it just doesn't lend itself to renovation and thus there is a need to replace the building. So the good news is with all of this is that there will be no tax increase for residents because we do have debt, so to speak, that's clicking off, being retired. So the bonds that are being sold to fund this project would be replacing that debt, thus eliminating the need for a tax increase. And, and let me just further explain that in terms of the city's overall debt, this really doesn't move the needle much at all. Just by way of example, our legal debt limit as a city pursuant to our charter is 10% of our SEV. So that means theoretically, according to this standard, the city could incur debt up to $551 million. That's 10% of our SEV. Our current debt, subject to this limit, is currently equates to $118 million, or about 21.5% of our legal debt limit. So this bond will move the needle a little bit, but only to 26%. So we're still in very good shape in terms of the city's outstanding debt even with this project. The building is really desperately needed. We look forward to finishing the design work over the summer, getting through bidding, summer, fall, and certainly under construction by this time next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Radke, anything else?
No.
Okay, council, anyone else on this item? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move on to the next item, which is communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Jefferson? No, there's?
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. First things first, I thank the DBW, the men and women of the DBW for the excellent work they did last week. Last, last year about this time I came up here and I told the degenerates and the perverts, "Just call the Golden Corridor the Golden Corridor," and they did not disappoint. They came out and gave that thing all kinds of names. I'd like to commend Councilman Radke. He put onto his Twitter site, I think it was a Twitter site or a Facebook site, either one, what the people thought about the golden ring. And they came out and they told us what they thought about the golden ring. Not much of it was positive, not positive at all. So tonight, I'm not asking for the people who, who thought it was a waste of money, a bad idea, gave it a nickname. Tonight, I'm asking for people to come out at the next meeting who was in favor of this thing. And I'm not talking about the usual Mayor Taylor Flunkeys, please, not you guys. I'm talking about everyday, ordinary citizens. Please come out and tell us why you think this thing was a benefit to the community when we have Hayes tore up, Shanner tore up, Utica Road tore up, 18 Mile Road tore up, 14 Mile Road tore up, Mound tore up. So I don't know how that improved the quality of life to, to people in this here community. So I'm asking those people on a cold February night, like I came out here tonight on a cold February night. You guys can come out here on a cold February night and tell us how it did benefit the community. And the reason I bring that up is because we just had a, a lot of people got laid off yesterday. More layoffs coming on the road. That was GM yesterday, Chrysler and Ford. They soon will be following and those people are people here in our community. And the reason I, like I said, the reason I'm bringing this up is because this council has to put before us a tax item coming up that's supposed to be falling off the books and that's the Safe Streets Millage. Folks, you have to start coming out because this is how things get done. Because at the last time when the Safe Streets Millage came, came out, they keep saying, that, that other side kept saying that they don't have to put that in front of the voters of this community. They could have just passed it, but they put it in front of the people. And you guys got scared and they passed it. You passed it, not them, you. This time, they don't have to do that. They can just do what they want to. So folks, if you don't want a tax increase or you want to see this go away, you're going to have to start coming out and participating in the process. Seeing stuff too late and putting it on Facebook and putting your anger out there on Twitter or social media, that's too late. We need you to start coming out, folks, and voicing your opinion on, on these items. If you don't, it's going to be free rein. It'd be too late for you guys to speak up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Not, close that portion, go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpoel, anything tonight?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Mr. Kachubski?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Council, any reports? Mrs. Zarco?
Mayor Taylor, just, there's two things. One is, I just want residents to know that Kyle Langloy, that is our Parks and Rec Director, was awarded the 2019 M. Parks Recreation Leadership Award. And following Kyle around for the last couple of years with all of the improvements that we've made to the park, with the new buildings, he really has been a great leader in coordinating all of the efforts, bringing everybody together as a team in order to accomplish what we have so far. And he's still going to keep working it until we have that rec center across the street. So I wanted to publicly congratulate him and make sure that we get that on our, our public record. And the other thing is, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. I think we need to explain that the bond that's coming off the rolls is not Safe Streets. Safe Streets is not a bond, it's a millage. So if you could please explain that to the residents, I'd appreciate it. So if you could please explain that to the residents, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Vanderpoel, you want to take a stab at that, as Ms. Zarco explained?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Zarco, so the Safe Streets Millage was approved by the voters six years ago. It will be up for renewal in November. The Safe Streets Millage provides $7 million in operational money to sustain staffing levels in the police and fire department. As many may know, we had to eliminate 200 full-time positions during the Great Recession. However, we tried to avoid reductions for obvious reasons in police and fire. We did have some minimal reductions in police and fire, but the Safe Streets Millage helped sustain the current staffing levels in police and fire. So $7 million a year, $42 million in total over the six-year period. There's a need to continue the Safe Streets Millage in November to sustain the current levels in police and fire for another period of time. In addition, the Safe Streets Millage provides $3 million annually to fund neighborhood road repairs. And as many know, we've made significant progress in our road repair program, thanks in large part because of Safe Streets. In addition, we've been fortunate enough to fund many other roadway projects. M-59 is just one example. Dequender, Shaner, 14 Mile Road's going to be done this year, 18 Mile Road's going to be done this year, Utica was done last year, 19 Mile Road's going to be done this year, Canal was done. So many of our major roads, by the end of this construction season, will be completely resurfaced or improved in one way or another. But then, the Safe Streets really helped with neighborhood roads, so there's an obvious need to continue that and, and the good work that's going on with neighborhood roadways. So that's a very specific millage that was approved by the voters. The city will not be asking for an increase in that Safe Streets Millage, just the ability to renew it, to continue under the current parameters of that millage. So it's not a bond, it's quite different from a bond. It, it's completely unrelated to the Public Works Building Bond or any other bond that the city has issued. I hope that helps.
It did, I think there would have been, if you could explain which bond is retiring?
The, the, there's a number of bonds, I don't have the exact bond in front of me that's being retired, but there's debt that is clicking off of our books, so to speak, that the DPW building will then replace, so there'll be no net increase.
Perfect. Thank you.
Council, anyone else? Mr. Radke, Miss, anyone going once? Well, I'm not going to say anything, I think it's all been said. So thank you for coming out tonight. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.